This is Donnie Hall, our state committee man for the Republican Party here in Clallam County, and he's going to say a few words.
Hopefully a very few. We, um, okay, excuse me, excuse me. I got my throat cut. We learned, last couple of weeks, and the Democrats were shocked to learn this, that Jim McIntyre actually has two friends. And it was announced all over the paper that Jim McIntyre has two friends. And it turned out that I am one of those friends. And I'm very proud to be a friend of Jim McIntyre's. I've worked with him on this campaign, and I really have not seen anybody work harder on a political campaign than I've seen Jim work. And we'll talk a little bit more about that later, but for the time being, let me say that I'm very proud to be Jim McIntyre's friend, and let me introduce my good friend, Jim McIntyre.
I'm gonna stand right over here a little so I don't talk to the back of people a little bit, but there's light here, and so there's no sense in having a video if it's all dark and you can't see who the people are. But the very first thing I wanted to do is present Commissioner Pro-Tim Donald Hall with his nameplate. Congratulations. There is a story there, and if you care to know about it, I'll be glad to tell that a little bit later. The friend thing that Don mentioned is a bit of an inside-baseball or inside-the-courthouse joke. But anyway, I'll relay that story a little bit later on, so I appreciate my friend Don and his willingness to step into the breach when I had to recuse myself, and this is a memento of that wonderful time when he was all dressed up in his suit that was a little bit too tight and his uncomfortable necktie. I burned all mine after I left the Beltway nine years ago, but he apparently did not. I wanted to start off by saying thank you very much for being here. Thank you for Michael McQuay and staff of Cocopelli's for this wonderful spread that you've seen. I hope everybody eats it all, because I'm going to have to take any of it home.
Well, we support you, Jim.
Thank you, Michael. The food is delicious here, and Michael is a staunch conservative, so this is where I do business. One of the places, one of my favorite places here. Let me just recognize a few people. I want to start by going around the room here. Orville Campbell, former mayor or deputy mayor of the city of Port Angeles. Grant Monroe, over in the corner, city council member of the Port Angeles, city of Port Angeles. My good friend Phil Kitchell, he's the other one of the two friends. Former commissioner from the west end of the county, Phil Kitchell. I see Connie Govey here, wave Connie. Connie is a candidate for the Port of Port Angeles. Susan Schotterfer, to her right, is the candidate for the Port Angeles School Board. Glenn Wiggins and his good wife Mimi. Glenn was former mayor or deputy mayor, or some kind of title such as that, in the city of Port Angeles. I'll introduce Kim Wyman in a moment. Jim Walsh, the vice chair of the state Republican Party. Glad he's up here from Aberdeen. Is Jamie near him?
No, she couldn't make attention. Sorry.
Well, anyway, tell her what she missed when you get to the background.
I will.
Appreciate you coming up. And who else? Will Payne, former prosecuting attorney, another friend. Charlotte Wright to his left. Charlotte and Will are candidates for the Squim School Board, and I'm glad they're here. And the guy that got me into this political thing, Jim Laskinoff. Fellow retired Coast Guard officer, he's an aviator.
Yay!
Yay!
And Jim is a hospital commissioner. The real short story there is I was having lunch with him, getting to know him, what, eight years ago now? A little over eight years ago? Telling him how bored I was, and Jim said, "Why don't you think about running for office?" And I said, "Well, I hadn't ever thought about that before," so I did it, and I won. A seat on the court commission. So if I ever screw anything up, it's his fault.
You're doing a good job.
Yeah, well, thanks. I'll say a little bit more a little bit later on. I know a couple of you have to leave a little bit early, but I do want to introduce Kim Wyman, our secretary of state. She has the distinction of being the only statewide elected official on the left coast.
Republican.
And she has declared her candidacy for reelection. We need to get her reelected. Bill Bryant, who unfortunately couldn't be here tonight, has declared his candidacy for the governorship. Think about what it would mean to have a Republican governor in the state. Bill's sister is getting married today, and I won't joke, I won't tell you the joke that he and I talked about, but he, I'm sure, would like to be here, but he has an obligation with his family, and I said, "I totally understood," but you will be back up here again, Bill." And he said, "Yes, I will." He's got very deep ties to the peninsula. He is a long time friend. Glenn and Mimi, I don't know if you were his godparents, but you're close to it, if you're not?
No, his wife, Zitzy, calls us aunt.
Okay, so you have that kind of relationship, and Bill has that kind of deep tie to the peninsula, so he is no stranger to us. We will have him back. But I want to ask Kim to come up first of all. That's a contribution from me to Kim for your reelection bid.
Thank you.
We need to get you reelected.
Thank you. Okay, I'm not totally sure how much of this I'm supposed to pitch wise, but I'll just do the whole enchilada, and then somebody else can follow me. So first of all, I just have to share with you, because it's kind of funny, yesterday, as I was leaving work, one of my coworkers asked me what I was doing this weekend. So last night, I was at the Air Force Ball, and got to be the keynote speaker, which was really fun. And then today, we did a naturalization ceremony in Tacoma, and that was fun, getting to watch people become American citizens, and I can tell you, every American should go to one of those ceremonies, because it's tear-jerking, and it's wonderful, and it's touching, and you feel very prideful of being American. And so I told him that, and said, "And then I'm going up to a political event for Jim McIntyre." What to be? I thought you were a Republican. I am. No, no, different Jim McIntyre, not the treasure. No! But it was just funny. Anyway, I just thought it was kind of hilarious.
He spells his name wrong.
There you go. But my background, and this isn't about me, but I want to give you it, because this will give you perspective of why I'm so supportive of Jim and his role as county commissioner. I spent about 20 years working in Thurston County government, first as an election director and then as a county auditor. So I was a Patty Roseanne, or now Shuna Graves of Thurston County. And in all those years, you know, your success as an elected official, particularly as an executive elected official, is dependent in large part to the executive board, or the legislative body, and the county commissioners, depending on the county structure, because you have to get your budget from them. And so how you work with commissioners is really important, and more important, and why, like I said, I'm so supportive of Jim, is if they don't do a good job, it has an adverse effect on your entire county. Now, I don't want to talk too much about Thurston, but let's say, out of the 12 years I was county auditor, 10 of those, I was the only Republican in the courthouse. In those 10 years they worked, three chairs held by the other side. I won't say Democrat, because that would be rude. And it was a challenge. It was a challenge. I'm a conservative, and I can tell you that having someone that has those values and understands business, understands how government works. I mean, Jim's resume, from his experience in the Coast Guard, his education, obviously, and his work in the federal government, all of those things prepared him to be a leader in Clallam County. And we got to work together a little bit, at the county level, sort of, so we overlapped a little, but what I can tell you is, that kind of leadership is really easy to be complacent about, and when you have really great leaders like Jim in those roles, sometimes it's easy, like, "Oh, he's got it locked up. All he's got to do is show us." And in county races, that couldn't be farther from the truth. So all of the things you're doing to help him keep getting out, doorbell, you know, especially in a county like Clallam, where you have that wonderful small-town feel. When we were pulling in today, I just said to John, I said, "I love Clallam County. I love Squim. I love Port Angeles. I love this whole area," because you have that feeling of a connected community. And Jim represents you, I know he does, and he is going to help continue moving you forward in ways that, I'm going to guess, his opponent won't. Understanding the impact of business and an economic growth agenda is important, and I know it's important to him here, and it's just anything you can do. So doorbelling is one, because it makes it real and personal. Putting those signs in, I did see quite a few on my way in. And by the way, thank you for the really great weather, because it was supposed to be raining, so, I mean, that's how good your county commissioner is. He brought us sunshine, anyway. But probably the main thing is really not your election like this, and I've spent a lot of time conducting elections at the county level and now at the state level, these are the elections where we have low turnout. And I can tell you that it just is the group that gets their people to the polls. I know that sounds cliché, because that's what wins elections. But tell your neighbors, tell your friends, if you can give a Saturday, go out and doorbell with Jim, do it. If you can put in some signs, if you can give him some money so he can make more and buy some more advertising closer to Election Day. We're down to the final crunch, and every bit helps, it makes a difference. I've done so many county races and helped with them, I know that all of those little things add up. They are the difference between winning and losing, and you can't get complacent right now. I don't know anything about his opponent, nor do I need to, but you want to pretend like you're five percentage points behind, so that Jim wins by 10. And I mean, like, 60%. Which would be good. So anyway, I know that you being here means a lot to him, it's very impressive from my perspective, and anything I could do to help, let me know.
Thanks.
All right.
And for you, to sustain you on your long journey back to Lacey or Olympia, here's a little basketball.
Thank you. I wasn't going to point that out, but thank you. Thank you, bro, here. I saw a couple stories on the way. Never, never.
We won't go there.
Wait a moment, thank you.
Let me just take a few more minutes. I don't need to go into a lot of biographical detail, because you all know me, and I know you, and I once again thank you for being here. But the reason why I'm running for reelection is to maintain good leadership for the county. We've got a Republican majority for the first time in 15 years on the county commission, and that's a very important thing, because we need a, have needed for a while, a different direction for Clallam County, one that focuses on people and the economy. And that's what I've been about for the last eight years, my service as an elected official in first the port and then the county government. And as you heard Kim say, I have got a long resume, 46 years in public service to this point. I'm asking the voters for another four, so that I can round it up to 50. That's a nice round number. My wife may have some plans after that, I don't know, we'll discuss that after November 3rd. But leadership is key, and the priorities that you set as a leader and push as a leader really are the most important thing. My priorities have been, ever since eight years ago, the people of Clallam County and the economy of Clallam County. What I have sought to do is to find ways to get behind the economy and push as hard as government can push, because goodness knows, we need a better and more vibrant economy here. That increases revenues to government without tax increases, and while I'm mentioning tax increases, we managed to do just the opposite. The Department of Revenue didn't know how to cut sales taxes. It had never been done before in the state, so we showed them how to do it. And that's only the beginning. We're going to find other ways where we can decrease the tax burden on our citizens while maintaining an effective county government. The two go hand in hand. And so that's the other priority of mine that you've heard me talk some about. The last thing that I want to mention to you, and you've seen some things in the newspaper about it, I was able to get elected by 21 counties to a seat on the State Board of Natural Resources, which is tremendously important as a policy board for the natural resource economy of Clallam County. The county, this county has 93,000 roughly acres of what are called Forest Board lands. Those are lands that were forfeited to county government back in the day, the 20s and the 30s, for non-payment of taxes. Those lands are now owned by the state government, DNR, Department of Natural Resources, and managed and maintained in perpetuity for the benefit of Clallam County and junior taxing districts. Anybody with a property tax levy, that's the state schools and all the other components of local government, get revenue whenever trees are harvested on those lands. And the management of those lands and the rate of return, and increasing the rate of return, is crucially important, because I would like to see a level of revenue that allows junior taxing districts to decrease, or maybe not even have a property tax levy. For example, the fire district in Forks right now is having their first-ever property tax levy, because their traditional amount of revenue from harvest of trees on the lands that I've described has gotten to the point where they can't sustain themselves. That's a bad situation, so what I want to do on that board is turn that situation around and perhaps even become able to cut property taxes at the county level. Of course, that's what we have control of. So in brief, that's why I'm running for reelection, that's what I want to do, it's the same thing that I've been doing for the last eight years in elective office. So if the voters return me with your help, they will be able to see what I've been able to accomplish so far, continue and accelerate. So thank you for being here, I appreciate your help. Love to have your vote, and your money would be awfully nice, too.
I've had an occasion, because of the Forest Advisory Board, to be at the county commissioners' office, listening to these dialogues that go on down there, and tell you, things get really testy down there, and if you haven't enjoyed that, you should go down.
It's the cheapest entertainment in town.
And it's really something to witness, and he does a job for us every day there. Thank you so much.
Thanks.
Okay, I'm supposed to wrap up, and... It's like I told Jim and Dick, you never know what I'll say when you put me in front of an audience. And one thing I want to say, first and foremost, is this election is not about Jim McIntyre. It's not just about Jim McIntyre. This election is all about the 24th congressional district. As you know, any candidate that's a Republican running in the 24th-led district gives away a minimum of 3,000 votes in five precincts of the city of Port Angeles. Those are guaranteed Democrat votes that we give up going in. The only way a Republican can win in the 24th is to have a big win in Clallam, and I'm sorry, Grace Hardberg just doesn't have enough voters. Clallam has to have a big win for a Republican to have any chance of winning in the 24th-led district.
Let's do it.
Let's do it, yeah. The Democrats know this, and that's why the Democrats are all in in opposing McIntyre. They've obstructed him and Commissioner Peach for a year. Every initiative that they pursued to create jobs, the Democrats have been right there, testifying against, writing editorials against, letters to the editor against, blogging against, anything they could do to sidetrack or derail the initiative. One of those Democrats is a fellow named Mark Ozias. He is the guy they've handpicked to be the candidate to run against McIntyre. When you put him side by side, you've got an empty suit against a fellow with approaching 50 years of public service. Now, who is this empty suit? He's a child of privilege, a son of entitlement, who proudly states he graduated from University of Puget Sound. That is a $60,000 a year private enclave, 2,600 students, of which 29% of the women there are members of a sorority. This is a school where liberal parents send their kids to have a nice, safe, liberal education in a hoisted environment, much like the schools were in the 40s or the 50s, with the old-style rah-rah fraternity-sorority-greek system. Graduating from there, and oh, by the way, I want to mention, this is a school, if you read their literature, they preach mightily about diversity. They do ethnic studies. You can get ethnic studies, they actually have degrees in ethnic studies that include not only Hispanic studies, but Latino slash Latina studies. But their actual campus diversity ranks 853rd in colleges across the United States. So this child of privilege, after doing a bunch of things we don't know about, went to Squim, and he opened up a store selling organic food. And he opened up a farm on his property in Happy Valley, growing organic food. And sometime later, this son of privilege approached the Squim City Council and begged, and I say begged, because that is in the transcript of his testimony to the Squim City Council, begged that marijuana sales, growth, and processing be allowed without zoning restriction. And his wife also testified that there be no special zoning requirements for the growth of marijuana. The Squim City Council turned down, and a few months later, this enterprise, this organic food enterprise, went out of business. Mr. Ozias says it because he got tired of doing retail. I guess you get tired doing retail when you're losing money. It gets old. So the next thing we find this child of entitlement doing is he's running the Squim Food Bank. I think that was to build some credentials, so he could portray himself as a man of the people, a common, ordinary Joe guy, next to this big, bad, former captain in the Coast Guard, who barks out orders and demands the people follow his decrees, which nothing could be further from the truth, but this is what's portrayed in the media. And then, the same child of privilege decides that his next entitlement ought to be county commissioner. It sounds like a great gig. Probably pays about $78,000 a year or so. And sure enough, all the Democrats have climbed on board, and they're supporting him. $2,500 from the Clallam County Democrats, followed by $2,000 from the Clallam County Democrats, followed by some fairly sizable donations from some bellhill millionaires. And who are these Democrats who are behind the scenes, want to install this empty suit and thus control him? I'll let you know. In Friday's paper, there was a letter to the editor from one of these Democrats. It says, it starts, "One of the more disgusting and self-serving right-wing lies propagated by the GOP and conservative pundits is that the wealthy have earned it." Okay, that tells you a little something of what he believes. And he goes on and says, "Why none wealthy conservatives believe this load of horse dung and the paper printed these words is hard to understand. Maybe they're just hardwired to always react to fear and anger instead of logic and reason." Now, I won't bore you with all of his logic and reason, but you can guess pretty much what it entails. Folks, with people like this, running the Democrat Party in Clallam County, let me tell you, if you're in business in Clallam County, there's a target on your back, because these Democrats, they'll stop at nothing to tax more and more of your revenue and your gains. We need a new reservoir in Squim, because we have a drought. We need $40 million to build it. Forget that we spent $350 million tearing down a dam, though it's working perfectly well, but we need $40 million for a new reservoir. Well, raise taxes. These folks have the nerve to ridicule the tax cut that was enacted unanimously by the commissioners last time around, this year. They have the nerve to ridicule. Well, it's small. It's miniscule. It's only 20 cents on $100. But I'll ask you, like I ask people when I'm going door-to-door for McIntyre, which would you rather have? A 20 cent for $100 tax cut, or a 20% for $100 tax increase? I have yet to find a household begging me for an answer. And that tells you all you need to know. Folks, we're going to have a minute where people will be invited up to make presentations. I'll check if you'd like to do so. And I want to say that I want to be the first one. I think that this is a critical election, for the reasons we mentioned. We've got a great candidate, who I said before, nobody works harder than Jim McIntyre for you. The party is working hard, we're fighting in the letters to the editor, we're fighting in comment blogs, and please, to the extent you can, dig as deep as you can, and let's get the advertising out there, so we can get the word out there, and put them over the top, because we've got the candidate, and let's do it.
Great, thanks.
And we'll call up the Republican women.
My name is Ann Stiles. For those who don't know me, I'm president of our local Clallam County Republican Women's Club, and on their behalf, I'd like to, Jim, present Jim with a check for your campaign. We've discussed many times in our meetings how proud we are, we've been of Jim as a candidate, as a commissioner, and we fully support his action. Thank you.
Thanks. Why don't we do it this way? Why don't we just close the formal part of the evening? There's a whole bunch of food here that needs to get on plates and be eaten, and if anybody wants to come up and have Stephanie memorialize anything on video, that would be just wonderful.
Hello, I'm Secretary of State Kim Wyman, and I'm here today in Port Angeles to support Jim McIntyre for a second term on the county commission in District Number 1. Jim has really done a great job, and I'm proud to call him a friend, and I'm proud to support him. I was in county government for about 20 years, 12 of those as the elected county auditor in Thurston County. And in all of those years, working with county commissioners from counties across the state, I can't remember a single county commission lowering taxes. That's unheard of in the state, and it's the leadership that Jim brings to the county commission that makes this possible. I encourage you to consider voting for Jim McIntyre for county commission, because he will lead your county in ways that will make you very proud to be a resident of Clallam County. Thank you.
...on this campaign, and I really have not seen anybody work harder on a political campaign than I've seen Jim work. And we'll talk a little bit more about that later, but for the time being, let me say that I'm very proud to be Jim McIntyre's friend, and let me introduce my good friend, Jim McIntyre.
I'm gonna stand right over here a little so I don't talk to the back of people a little bit, but there's light here, and so there's no sense in having a video if it's all dark and you can't see who the people are. But this is where I do business. But this is where I do business, one of the places, one of my favorite places here. Let me just recognize a few people. I want to start by going around the room here. Orville Campbell, former mayor or deputy mayor of the city of Port Angeles. Grant Monroe over in the corner, city council member of the Port Angeles, city of Port Angeles. My good friend Phil Kitchell, he's the other one of the two friends. Former commissioner from the west end of the county, Phil Kitchell. I see Connie Govey here, wave Connie. Connie is a candidate for the Port of Port Angeles. Susan Schotterfer to her right is the candidate for the Port Angeles School Board. Very first thing I wanted to do is present Commissioner Protem Donald Hall with his name card. Congratulations. There is a story there and if you care to know about it, I'll be glad to tell that a little bit later. The friend thing that Don mentioned is a bit of an inside baseball or inside the courthouse joke. But anyway, I'll relay that story a little bit later on, so I appreciate my friend Don and his willingness to step into the breach. When I had to recuse myself, and this is a memento of that wonderful time when he was all dressed up in his suit that was a little bit too tight and his uncomfortable necktie. I burned all mine after I left the Beltway nine years ago, but he apparently did not. I wanted to start off by saying thank you very much for being here. Thank you for Michael McQuay and staff of Cocopelli's for this wonderful spread that you've seen. I hope everybody eats it all because I'm looking at the taking of it home. Well, we support you, Jim. Thank you, Michael. And the food is delicious here and Michael is a staunch conservative.
This is Donnie Hall, our state committeeman for the Republican Party here in Clallum County, and he's going to say a few words.
Hopefully a very few. We, okay, excuse me, excuse me. I got my throat cut. We learned last couple of weeks, and the Democrats were shocked to learn this, that Jim McIntyre actually has two friends. And it was announced all over the paper that Jim McIntyre has two friends. And it turned out that I am one of those friends. And I'm very proud to be a friend of Jim McIntyre's. I've worked with him.